City Council meeting and city clerk.
The record will show that all members are present except for Councilmember Nichols, who is excused, and Councilmember Selich.
He's here.
He's here.
He's here. He'll be here in just a second. Closed session report.
The council approved a settlement of a dispute over a contract that was for delayed damages for the purchase of fire trucks. And so that was settled for $75,000 that would be paid to the city in delayed damages for the delivery of the fire trucks. And the city also directed its outside legal counsel to prepare a petition and to bring back and meet with the council for determination at the next meeting for the filing of that petition to challenge project of 2323 Main Street in the Irvine Business Complex in the city of Irvine. It would be a secret challenge. That's all.
Thank you very much. Would everybody please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and please remain standing. And Reverend George Crisp of Christ Church by the Sea will give the invocation afterwards. And Councilmember Daigle, will you please lead us?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us be in the spirit of prayer. God of great and small, who has blessed this land and its people with riches beyond compare, we ask your guidance for this assembly tonight as it conducts the business of the citizens of Newport Beach in its centennial year. In these years, the city has seen many changes, and there are many more to come. In this summer season, we are especially mindful of the natural resources you have provided, the sun that warms us and the ocean breezes that cool, the sea with its constant waves, and the sand for our leisure. We are grateful for the practical resources at our hands, large and small businesses, labor, education, and the infrastructures which provide support. You have given us the blessing of human resources, people of many cultures and traditions, people with differing languages and histories, people who serve the public interest with extraordinary skill. Many decisions are made in this chamber that affect our city's people. We ask for your guidance upon these community leaders as they consider the items on their agenda tonight. Let them approach every development, contract, permit, report, and plan for the future with open hearts and minds. We dare not ask you, O God, to bless the work of this body, but rather that the work of this council would be a part of what you are blessing. Amen. Thank you, Reverend Crisp. Under our first presentation tonight is Bicycle Awareness Week and or not Bicycle Awareness Day, excuse me. And we have a number of bicyclists that have residents of Newport Beach and have a certain amount of reputation throughout the bicycling community in that we have state and national championships and the Masters Group and let's see, it's Malcolm Hill and Stephen Strickler. Ruth Clements is a current national champion in bicycling. Linda Schnepp is a current national and world champion. Richard Meeker is a former national champion and Ken Fuller is a former national and world champion. Could I have all of those that are here, please come forward? And Councilmember Daigle, could you give us a little bit of a... Councilmember Daigle is one of our bicycling enthusiasts and she probably rides with some of these people. I don't know if she can keep up with you or not, but maybe she can.
Sure. They're all very talented athletes and extremely dedicated. They're training six, seven days a week. And following these training rides, they usually can be found in coffee shops in Corona del Mar. And as Mayor Webb mentioned, national, world champions, very impressive. I know Richard Meeker was on Lance Armstrong's Masters team. So really the top quality and certainly all of the infrastructure that the city of Newport Beach has developed over the years facilitates this training. And our fine weather, you know, enables you to train six days a week. And no, I can't keep up with them anymore.
Okay. Well, each one of you has a proclamation and the wording and the proclamations are the same except for your name and your accomplishment. So let me read those proclamations and I'll come down and hand them out. Whereas the city of Newport Beach through its public bike lanes, trails, and other public roads provides cyclists in our community a place to enjoy riding. The city of Newport Beach recognizes bicycling as a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation. Through daily use of the city's cycling infrastructure, local residents engaged in cycling competitions have brought home national and world championship titles. The education of cyclists and motorists as to proper and safe cycling is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. Now therefore, I, Don Webb, mayor of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaim August 8th, 2006 as Bicycle Awareness Day in Newport Beach and hereby give this special honor to, and this would be the various different people I noticed, announced, and I will come down and then do each one of you separately.
And who's the fastest person up Newport Coast?
The Newport Sister City Association Youth Summit Representatives. Who's going to represent the... Come on forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'm Karen Everts. I'm a former president of the Newport Beach Sister City Association. And our current president Connie Skipper could not be here this evening, so you get me. And it is my distinct honor to introduce two of the three young adults who represented our city in Washington, D.C. last month for the 50th anniversary of this global sister cities movement. Now, it was President Dwight Eisenhower's concept in the 1950s that people and communities could be connected people to people in an effort to foster a more peaceful world. It's a fairly timely concept when you think about it, a peaceful world. Now, in Ike's own words, and this I quote, "If we are going to take advantage of the assumption that all people want peace, then this program is for people to get together," and you have to forgive this phrase, "to get together and to leap governments." And we don't mean you because you're very supportive of our organization and we thank you for support. He means those other governments. So to leap governments, to work out not one method, but thousands of methods by which people can gradually learn a little bit more about each other. So that's what this organization is all about. So accordingly, last month, we sent three students to the Youth Summit on Global Citizenship in Washington, D.C. And it's my pleasure to introduce two out of those three. Michelle Atkins was unable to be here this evening, so it's my pleasure to introduce to you Catherine Hoffman, who will come up and speak, and she will be followed by Michael Ford. So thank you.
Okay.
First of all, I would just like to thank you guys for allowing me to come and speak to you. And secondly, and most importantly, thank the sister city for giving me the opportunity to go because I had a great time and it was an amazing experience and I'm just so happy that I got to take part in that. So earlier this summer, I got to go to Washington, D.C. And of course, as part of the summit, we did all the normal Washington, D.C. stuff. We saw all the monuments. We went to the Smithsonian. We met members of Congress. We went to different embassy receptions. It was really, really good to see how the government system works in Washington, D.C. But most importantly, we went to learn about the sister cities. And we learned about leadership for social change and the way to bring about social change by connecting people together. And I just, for me, it was such an amazing experience to learn about different trends in our society and how they impact our future and how everyone's idea and how everyone's personal view of the future is to make the world a better place. And it was just an amazing experience because we all learned about how to bring peace through cultural differences and exchanges. And I just had an amazing time and I know that all the other colleagues that I went with did too. And just some of the things that was really interesting for me was we got to go to an embassy reception and I got to go to Egypt's embassy. And they have just a beautiful embassy. It's really beautiful and decorated and I just, it was so interesting to see how they interacted with each other because they speak Arabic and how they wore their cultural dresses. And it was really an amazing experience and they spoke to us about how they're being affected by the Middle East, the conflicts in the Middle East. And I just, I learned so much from, about things that I really had not known anything about and I just am so glad that I got to take part in that. So thank you very much for coming to allow me to speak and thank you to the sister cities too.
Thank you for going and representing us.
Thank you.
Michael?
Hello, I am Michael Ford and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have been very involved with the sister cities organization and I've represented Newport Beach numerous times. I have gone to Antilles, France, and Okazaki, Japan, and both those cities are sister cities of Newport Beach. I have also helped work on the Ensenada Art Exchange, which took place earlier this year. Most recently though, as you know, I went to Washington, D.C. for the Global Citizenship Youth Summit. The sister city organization is a great organization because it brings people from all over the world together so that representatives can learn firsthand the thoughts and beliefs of the other representatives and learn about the cities and their lifestyles on an individual, people-to-people level. As Catherine discussed, we had, it was great to have exposure to Washington, D.C. and the politics and all the world issues there. And we learned a lot about that stuff. I mean, don't get me wrong. But I found that you could learn just as much from the interactions you have with people from that actual area, from all over the world and from all over the country. I now have a better aspect of what's going on in, like what America's all about because we're all not living on the beach here in a very nice, nice city and that some kids are living in the Midwest where they go ice fishing for fun. So I also got a better understanding of the world because in my group, my particular group, there's kids from the Czech Republic, Germany, Morocco, and Pakistan. So that was all very interesting. During the conference, we made many great friendships. My group bonded very, very quickly. We shared all of our ideas and no matter how bizarre they were, they were respected, which I thought was really, really cool. For example, my roommate, which was kind of awkward for me because I'm a kid in Newport Beach, I go surfing a lot, and his idea of fun was walking his pigs and going ice fishing. Those are his two favorite things to do. But yeah, in the two weeks that I've been back, I've actually had five kids from the trip come visit Newport Beach because they generated an interest. I guess I encourage people to come out here. Cool, I guess. And one, two of them were from out of state and one was from Texas and one was from Delaware. They came and they left last week and now I feel like they better understand the city and it's not the OCTV show. It's very different and they met people from the city and they have a better understanding of the city. I expect that these friendships that I've made to last a lifetime. And I thank the sister city organization for allowing me to go and just having all these great friendships I've made over the years with Japan and France and now the Washington, the Washington, D.C. trip. And I also thank the city of Newport Beach for their support of this particular program and making the city one that I'm extremely proud to represent. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that those watching as well as those in the audience can see the quality of our youth that we are sending out to represent the city. And I think that we are very proud of what you're doing and I appreciate you volunteering to do this for us and actually waving the flag for Newport in some places other than Newport Beach. So thank you very much. The next item is Centennial Sponsor Presentation. And I believe that we have an individual sitting in the front row that would like to come up and tell us about something. I see you've slowed down just a little bit, but not much.
Well, you know what? I'm a whole lot better than I was, I want to tell you. But first of all, I want to congratulate all these young people. I'm so proud that Newport Beach has all these wonderful young people that are going out into the world to see what it's all about because our world is not just right here where we feel so secure and safe. It's all over the world. But I'm delighted tonight to present to the city mayor, Don Webb, Pro Tem, Rosansky, Councilman Selich, Councilman Curry, Todd Ridgeway, and my councilwoman dear, Leslie. I'm delighted to present tonight with three checks for the Uncooperative Peer-to-Peer Party that will conclude our centennial separation. It's been a long two years since I first joined the centennial team and this past year has been especially long with my accident intervening. But I want to give due credit to Marie Knight and her city team of Sean Levin, Matt Luer, Terry Craig, Andrea McGuire, Jan Stenweding, anyone else I've missed who have given 150% to their time to make this the best and the biggest party in Southern California history. Our first check from the Downtown Balboa Business Grid Group for $5,000, a group really committed to Balboa for many years. And these guys, I know because I formed the group like 13 or 12 years ago and they are really committed to Balboa. Our second check from Dane and Bob Pettit for $5,000, both of whom sacrificed many hours and days for the city of Newport Beach because we truly love our city and we believe that you need to give back to the city that you love. A third check from Leo Gagason for $5,000, an angel in disguise who is working hard to clean up both the Newport Pier near his Oceanfront 21 restaurant. He picks up, he has people going out picking up trash all over the place. And the Balboa Pier where he is working hard to get the Balboa Pavilion in A1 shape and he's cleaning up the entire town of Balboa. I will have another check tomorrow and I don't exactly know exactly what it is, but I will tell you then. Sandy Haskell and I worked very hard to raise money for this entire event. We're honored and pleased to be able to do this for our city. This will bring our total to well over $700,000. So thank you very much. Congratulations to our city.
For those of you, I didn't mention her name because I thought she'd mentioned herself. This is Dana Pettit at the microphone. And thank you very much for your contribution during your husband's contribution and all the effort that you and Sandy put together in raising the $700,000 and particularly in pulling together the peer-to-peer event, which, what date is that again?
October 8th, 2006.
October 8th.
And October, and October 6th, 2006 is the Les Brown Band Renowned Celebration Band at the Balboa Pavilion. And you can go online or go to the ACES and get tickets for that. They're $50 apiece to dance to that wonderful group. And then we have the big celebration on October 8th from 2:00 to 8:00 with fireworks going off both piers after that final event. It's a great family event for everybody to celebrate our wonderful city. So thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, Dana, and thank you for all the many, many hours, thousands of hours you've probably put in.
Thank you very much. It's been a great pleasure.
Okay. We were going to recognize the Centennial Committee tonight, but that's, several of the people were not able to attend, so we'll be doing that at the next meeting. City clerk?
As a notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay. We'll start with Councilmember Curry. Is there any announcement or item you want placed on a future agenda?
No items this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Thank you. I asked about four weeks ago for a study by our planning staff of a parking structure in Balboa Village. I would like now for that to come to our next study session. If brief, fine, but I think it's appropriate and timely in light of the presentation that's going to be made by the Nautical Museum tonight.
Centennial moment, we have 24 days till September 1st.
Yay!
One more centennial moment after this one. In 1921, the trustees were very concerned because a large houseboat had come into the bay and anchored near the yacht club. I'm assuming that's the Newport Harbor Yacht Club. And the people were concerned that their anchors were impairing the navigability of the area and they wanted the houseboat moved. In 1938, the people from Lido Isle petitioned to have the speed limits on Lido Isle set at 25 miles an hour. And a lady named Mary E. Burnham had put in a bid and for two lots in Corona del Mar, lots 17 and 18 and tract 682. And she was given, sold those two lots for $300. In 1955, Mayor Hill reminded people that in one year would be the city's golden anniversary. And she appointed a committee to handle the golden anniversary. And the chairman of that committee was Joseph Beek. With an alternate, it would be Mrs. Beek. And others on the committee were Pappy Palmer, R.L. Patterson, who was a city engineer at the time, Maury Stanley, he was involved in the development of the Cliffhaven Community, Theodore Robbins with the Ford Motor Sales, and Les Stephenson, who was a longtime city council member. Then in 1960, on August 8th, there was a petition from a large number of people to request that Mariners Library be constructed at Mariners Park. And obviously that was done and reconstructed just recently. So that's your centennial moment for August 8th, 2006. Thank you very much for your help, Kathy, on that. The next item is the Consent Calendar. City clerk?
All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 10 and supplemental items 16 and 17 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmembers, starting with Councilmember Daigle, do you have any item you wish to remove from the consent calendar?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Ridgeway? Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Selich?
I have none.
Councilmember Curry?
No items.
I have none. Does the staff have any?
We have none.
Does anybody in the public wish to remove any items that'd be 1 through 10, 16 and 17? Seeing none?
Mrs. Otting told me she wanted to remove number three, but she was going to be talking with some people out front, for what that's worth.
Well, let me see here. Should we wait and allow her? Oh! Does anybody wish to have anything removed from the consent calendar? Now, I realize I could have gone ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. Number three, I just wanted to, a point of clarification. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the adoption of items, consent calendar items, 1 through 10, 16, and 17, except for number three.
Second. Please vote. Item number three, cable television, oh, excuse me. City clerk?
Motion carries.
Item number three, cable television ordinance adopting a franchise agreement with Cox Communications. Otting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Blue Dell. Thank you. I appreciate that. Hi, my name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I have Cox as my cable subscriber and they have improved greatly over the years and we get better television reception. The only questions I had, which is a point of clarification, because I think it was brought up at the study session but then not discussed later on, and I think it might have been Councilmember Daigle who brought up the fact that both companies were going to be contributing money to the city, some types of fees besides the franchise fees. And I was just kind of curious as to how the money was going to be spent. And also, their cable place, if you want to have a show, I guess you have to go to their facility. There isn't going to be one that's going to be here. And my understanding is that's still out in Rancho Santa Margarita. And so that's not the closest place in the world and with gasoline at almost $4 a gallon.
Takes about a half hour. Takes at least a half an hour.
At least half an hour without traffic, right. So I didn't know if there were any plans in the future besides the fact if and when we build a city hall, I'm sure there might be, as to if we're going to bring anything closer to here or if we're going to be able to go to Costa Mesa if people want to have a show put on Channel 3 since half the city's time's mirror and half the city is Cox. And thank you so much for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As far as that is concerned, can you, I believe that the total contribution, the two together, is right around $900,000.
I think it's a little in excess of that one. This one is $660,000 based upon $60 per subscriber. And the money would be spent as determined by the city council, but the agreement with the city would say that it would be spent for cable TV services or benefit. So it wouldn't just go in the general fund to be spent for police or fire. It would be earmarked specifically for cable programming or equipment.
Yes, I think it would be, the fees are limited to be used for the PEGS or governmental-related cable programs or the city's own requirements. Say if we wanted to update the city hall chambers for better cameras or better coverage, those types of improvements, equipment.
You used an acronym, PEGS.
Oh, Public Educational and Governmental Channels.
Okay. Good. Councilmember Daigle?
I believe the total amount is over $1 million, a lump sum. And then one of the corporations per year is about $120,000. So I think for the time being, we're putting it in the bank.
Okay.
Move item three?
Is there anybody else in the public that wished to discuss this? Seeing none? Second, their motion. Please vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
a show put on Channel 3, since half the city's, you know, time's mirror and half the city is Cox. And thank you so much for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As far as that is concerned, can you, I believe that the total contribution, the two together, is right around $900,000.
I think it's a little in excess of that one. This one is $660,000 based upon $60 per subscriber. And the money would be spent, as determined by the city council, but the agreement with the city would say that it would be spent for cable TV services or benefit. So, it wouldn't just go in the general fund to be spent for police or fire, it would be earmarked specifically for cable programming or equipment.
Yes, I think it would be, the fees are limited to be used for the PEGS or governmental-related cable programs, or the city's own requirements. Say, if we wanted to update the city hall chambers for better cameras or better coverage, those types of improvements, equipment.
You used an acronym, PEGS?
Oh, Public Educational and Governmental Channels.
Okay. Good. Councilmember Daigle?
I believe the total amount is over $1 million, a lump sum. And then, one of the corporations per year is about $120,000. So, I think for the time being, we're putting it in the bank.
Okay. Move item three? Is there anybody else in the public that wished to discuss this? Seeing none?
Second, their motion.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
City Clerk?
Public comments, public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Public comments are now open on non-agenda items. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Dolores Otting, I still live in Newport Beach, and I have nothing more to say after this tonight. My comments are still associated with the EIR for the general plan update, and I've gotten a few phone calls from different people within the city. And I guess, I mean, like, the question still is, is what happens to green light or Section 423, whatever it's called? Okay. Because that, the people still don't know, and the EIR didn't really address what happens to green light one, I guess now you would want to call it, what the baseline is going to be. One would believe that it's going to be the new general plan update, but basically, there might not be any green light one. And what happens to the cumulative totals? That wasn't addressed anywhere, and it wasn't answered during the public hearing. So, those are questions out there in the real world. And if I'm getting phone calls on them, then they must be, you know, from a lot of different people that normally don't get involved in this. And then, secondly, up in the Spyglass Hill area, the week before last in the Register, there was an article about a new alcohol and drug rehab home called Beaumondee, didn't give an address. They advertised it as a very high-end, 600 thread count sheets on the bed, so it's for, you know, it's a very exclusive type of place. And I remember Councilmember Ridgeway, you stating that the reason why you wanted to downzone some of the peninsula was so that these places could not be put in because they were in R2 areas. Well, the top of Spyglass Hill is like an R1 area, as far as I know, there's no apartments up there or anything like that. And so, this is another unit. I went to the city yesterday and to the licensing and permitting people, and they didn't know anything about it. I brought back the newspaper today, and so, they're going to look into it. So, I think it might be the second one up at Spyglass. So, I don't know where, but they're certainly all over the city, and I know we have the legislative committee. And I'm hoping that they'll have a public meeting and invite the public to one of their first meetings, so that the people can, you know, kind of tell you guys, and I know they do, how they feel about these places. Not that they, I mean, like, not that we don't need them, but something has to happen that they can be better placed. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
City Attorney?
Mayor, I might want to suggest to Ms. Otting that the website, the city's website has a kind of a frequently asked questions section that talks about the limitations on the city council's ability to act on these homes, and where the city's authority lies, and where the state's lies. Also has sample letters and information on your local state representatives that you can, people can call to let them know about their concerns, because at this point in time, a lot of the legislation ties the council members' hands. But as you pointed out, there is the legislative committee, and we do have a commitment to looking at, trying to get legislation passed.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Thank you. Dolores, we did pass an ordinance, I believe, last year that prevents these type of rehabilitation homes, that may have a standard on it, from locating in R1 zones. So, we would like to know where it is, and that is on the books. Now, it's untested, we're in new territory, but I want to let you know it's there.
City Attorney, did you have a comment on that, or?
Well, I thought if the council would like either that, or I could talk to Dolores, she could give me a call on the questions on the general plan.
Okay. And actually, I think that as far as the question related to what is our current charter baseline as far as the future is concerned, assuming our general plan passes, that might be an interesting thing for us to, not interesting, but I think it would be a good idea for us to make sure that that information comes back to us, so that we can share that with the public and make sure that everybody understands that. Okay, Councilmember, I mean, City Attorney?
I could do it now, if you'd like.
Sure, go ahead.
The measure that the council put on the ballot is the land use tables and the land use plan, which has been developed in a manner to reflect the similar restrictions or limitations on development in the original existing general plan. So, there is, there's a designation for different areas and different land uses for exact amounts of development that can occur. So, the measure that the council put on was the entire map. So, once voted on, then that entire map will set the limitations on development, both any increases and also any decreases would also be set as approved under that new land use map, and that would be part of the new general plan. So, that would be the standard by which any future changes would be measured by looking at those new numbers, those new allowed developments, allowed development for each property. And it would be subject, if you wanted to change it, increase it, it would be subject to green light. So, nothing happens with green light. In fact, this, the general plan is complying with green light by having a vote on the entire amendment to the general plan. And then, any future amendments, whether to increase something that was previously decreased, or to change a land use that would result in one of the thresholds in the green light, measurous, or Section 423 of our charter, those are the three different names that people give it, any of those would then be subject to a green light vote. So, it doesn't take away the power of green light.
Okay, so in other words, if the new general plan passes, the new land use plan is approved by the voters, if we had any general plan amendment in the future that added 40,000 square feet or more, 100 residential units or more, or 100 peak hour trips or more in a statistical area that's set up, then it would require a green light vote?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Could I add just one thing, well, two things, Mr. Mayor? To your question?
Here's one.
Not only, not only an individual amendment in the future that would cross one of the thresholds, but we will also be continuing to track things within a statistical area for the cumulative analysis. And I think that Mrs. Otting asked about what has happened in the new general plan with previous amendments that were approved without a vote of the people, and therefore, we've been tracking them. And in the analysis that we did for the numbers that are included in the ballot measure, we did account for all the previous amendments as required by Charter Section 423.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, public comments are closed. The next item on the agenda is oral reports from city council members on committee activities. I'm not going to go through each one of those, I'll just say, Councilmember Daigle, do you have any?
No, I don't. Well, we had the Media Communications Committee meeting, and we are evaluating applications for Wi-Fi, particularly parking management, traffic management, and looking to hire a consultant to assist us in technical expertise. So, we are trying to move that forward.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Thank you. On the Local Coastal Plan Program Certification Committee, we're meeting on the 14th next week, 3:00 here at City Hall. We will be reviewing the implementation plan. The committee had gone forward with a very comprehensive and total rewrite of the implementation plan, and we decided to fall back to what is existing, so, to make it easier and actually more understandable. So, we'll be reviewing that, and I'm hopeful in the next few months that at least the committee can move it forward to city council, and the city council can approve it, and then it goes up to Coastal Commission to hopefully anyhow in 2007, get our LCP approved.
Councilmember Curry?
Report?
Councilmember Selig?
I have no reports.
Councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
And I have none. So, the next item on our agenda is Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. There were three items on the Planning Commission's last agenda, two variances, and one appeal of a modification, denial. The first variance was on Pacific Drive in Corona Del Mar. It was a request to exceed the basic height limit on the downward slope of one of the left-side lots along that street. It was a relatively modest exceedance of the height limit, and quite typical for lots with that extreme sloping condition. One thing of note regarding this particular project and its report is that it was our first analysis that included analysis of bluff alterations pursuant to our new coastal land use plan policies. And so, for the staff, it was breaking new ground and considering all those words in on-the-ground, real application sense. And I'm happy to note that the analysis was reasonably straightforward and came out making a lot of sense, and we think that those policies will hold the city in good stead in the future. The second variance was on East Bay Avenue in Balboa. It was a request to exceed the permitted floor area limit for a very unusual segment of a lot that actually had two alley frontages and no street frontage. The lot itself was 30 feet by 30 feet, and because of the setbacks within the zoning code, no development, no new construction that would result in any square footage would have been allowed under the zoning rules. The Planning Commission did approve this item. They approved a very small guest cottage that I think was about 650 square feet with a two-car garage. I think the garage was almost as big as the living space. The last item was probably the most interesting and challenging. It was a modification permit request to permit the as-built but unpermitted construction of a wrought iron gate and block wall combination at a house in the Newport Coast area. This particular wall encroached into the front yard setback and exceeded the 3 1/2-foot height limit contained within the Plain Community District Regulations. Apparently, the property owner had gone to the county to discuss the need for a permit prior to the jurisdictional change from county to city. And for whatever reason, the contractor elected not to receive his building permit. And so, when the community association complained about the construction to us, we had no choice but to impose the city's rules, which are now in effect there. And because the applicant did not provide sufficient information regarding the necessary findings, the zoning administrator did deny the application. The applicant did appeal this to the Planning Commission, and they considered the same information as well as additional information provided by the applicant, but once again found that of the three findings, finding number one, which was discussing how the property had practical difficulties representing compliance difficulties, could not be made, and they supported the zoning administrator and did not approve the appeal. That concludes my report.
Any questions of Ms. Temple? Thank you very much. Does anybody in the public wish to comment on this? Seeing none, that's a receive and file. The next item on our agenda is the scheduled vacancy for Planning Commission. We have, our nomination committee has nominated, or has indicated that we are to consider Tim Brown, Aileen Cradjen, and Scott Piattar.
Councilmember Selig, Scott Piattar. Councilmember Ridgway, Scott Piattar. Councilmember Daigle, Scott Piattar. Mayor Protem Rosansky, Aileen Cradjen. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim Brown. And Mayor Webb, Tim Brown. Scott Piattar is the new Planning Commissioner.
Next item on our agenda is, actually, do I need to open this to public comment? Okay. Probably anybody wish to comment? All right. Item 13. All right, well, that's the way it goes. Unscheduled vacancy in the Board of Library Trustees appointment. Our committee has recommended John Maftekar and Stephanie Margia.
Mayor Webb, before we do vote, I believe that we have qualified candidates for the library board. One of our longtime library supporters has asked that we reconsider the nominees to add a third nominee, so I'll bring that forward, their request in the form of a motion. And it's a request from what's been a very active and traditional library base that we reconsider to add a third nominee.
Okay, so that this would be a motion to reconsider and opening nominations, and if I'm not mistaken, if we do that, then we would need to wait two weeks before we actually voted? City Attorney?
You'd have two options. You could, if the motion would be to reconsider the nominations, then the next meeting would be the setting of the nominations of the new members. And then, as you indicated, then there'd be another two-week wait, unless you wanted to make as part of the motion a determination that you would waive that additional two-week time period, and at the next meeting, open or consider additional nominations, and then vote after that.
Well, maybe we should first see if there's four votes to reopen the nominees.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any, is this, is a motion reconsideration subject to public comment?
Sure.
I'm asking this?
No. I don't think so, because that's not...
Is there any discussion amongst the city council before we vote on this? Please vote.
With Councilmembers Rosansky, Webb, and Ridgway voting no, the motion fails.
Okay, so now we vote on the two nominees.
Okay.
Councilmember Selig, Stephanie Margia. Mayor Protem Rosansky, Stephanie Margia. Councilmember Ridgway, Stephanie Margia. Councilmember Daigle, Stephanie Margia. And Mayor Webb, John Maftekar. Stephanie Margia is the new Board of Library trustee.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14 is a Nautical Museum oral presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Webb. Thank you, council, for allowing me to come and speak. My name's David Muller, I'm the Executive Director of the Newport Harbor Nautical Museum. Tonight, I'd like to give a brief PowerPoint presentation about the renderings for the new museum. They've been completed. Want to introduce it to the council and the community over the next, well, certainly the council this evening, but over the course of the next several months, we will be doing an outreach campaign to the, as many homeowners associations as are willing to allow us to speak. We're inviting questions about what we intend to do. I want to focus on the fact that this is a conceptual program, but we felt it was time to present this. We've been fortunate to receive a great deal of media coverage over the last several months. We just held a press briefing yesterday on these renderings, have them embargoed up until tomorrow morning so that we could present it to all of you. So, with that in mind... So with that in mind, I'm new to this remote control stuff, so, okay, here we go. We're beginning with this idea of the Fun Zone circa nineteen sixteen, and I thought, Mayor Webb, you would have a particularly appreciation for this vintage photograph. This is the Fun Zone back in nineteen sixteen, and we believe that time period pavilion in the background. So the emphasis point here is tall ships have been a part of our nautical history for many years, going as far back as year number one in nineteen oh six. This, of course, is our present home, the Pride of Newport, originally affectionately known as the Ruben E. Lee. Served some great food, from what I understand, but the museum bought it in nineteen ninety-five. The Pride of Newport is forty-one years old. It was built with a twenty-year lifespan, so we've exceeded that by several years. Right now, the Pride of Newport is for sale. Interestingly enough, we do have several buyers for it. Buyers tend to step back when they find out that the Irvine Company, who we lease our parking lot from, would like the boat gone as soon as our lease is up. And just for background, our lease was up on June thirtieth of this year. So we're now paying on a month-to-month basis for the next, until we actually do vacate the premises. Now, the emphasis point on the Pride of Newport, it consumes thirty percent of our budget just for maintenance. So as well-built as this was, it's time for us to move on, which is where we now find ourselves. In December of two thousand and five, the Nautica Museum, through a partnership and a loan agreement with the Bank of America, we acquired the Fun Zone, which, from the community standpoint and from the trustees' point of view of the Nautica Museum, certainly is a cherished community landmark for all of us. There are, you know, on a regular basis, we get emails from all sorts of people who who bring up the idea, this one lady most recently said to me, you know, I take my grandchildren here on a regular basis. She said, I've been going there since I was five. And her number one concern was the Ferris wheel. And one of the points that are critical in this entire presentation is the lease on the Ferris wheel is up in twenty thirty. They have a right to renew that lease to twenty sixty. So my response to the lady who asked me that question about the Ferris wheel, I said, I will buy you your ticket on, in twenty thirty, I'll buy you your ticket so we both can ride that Ferris wheel together. All bets are off for twenty sixty, but at least we know we could make it to twenty thirty. Our goal now is to create a renowned destination that serves this community and Southern California. So our goals are pretty straightforward. Educate, inspire, beautify, and preserve. The education and the inspiration part are fairly straightforward. Education, we've got, at this point, a half a dozen programs, including the Partnership for Clean Water, which is a partnership with the City of Newport Beach to educate the entire class of fifth graders throughout the Newport Mesa School District. I want to focus on the word inspiration for a minute because what we find is that there are museums around the world that you walk into, and for that moment, for that one experience, you are actually inspired. And I want, I ask people, what is it about those experiences that do inspire you? Because our intent is to create a location where you are inspired to learn more, to experience sailing, to experience boating, go out on the water in whatever way possible but to inspire people to do that. The subject of beautify, of course, that goes back to the revitalization of Balboa Village. The city has invested a tremendous amount of money over the last few years to improve the entire area. Our goal is to help be a catalyst in continuing that effort. So with that, we worked with Bauer &amp; Wiley Architects to design our preview, excuse me, our museum, and you'll see that in these renderings. The last point, of course, is the basis of our mission, which is the preservation of the history of, the nautical history of Newport Harbor. So our mission very clearly is to preserve and promote the nautical heritage of Newport Harbor, Southern California, and the Pacific. Our means for doing that is multimedia exhibition as well as education programs focused on nautical arts, artifacts, events, and customs. I want to add to this, and we'll go into this in just a minute, and that is the subject of edutainment. But before I get there, first, why a new museum? First, we've outgrown our current location. You know, it's a great problem to have when the demand is too high. So we're very fortunate in that we've got school districts that call us on a regular basis wanting to have their students have a waterfront experience but also learn at the same time. We're it, except for the sea base and the sailing center. From an academic standpoint, we meet California curriculum standards on a host of different programs. We want to control, and we are now controlling our destiny through ownership of our own property. As I mentioned before, our lease with the Irvine Company on that parking lot was up on June thirtieth. We are hustling right now. We want to expand and enhance education programs. There's a need to expand our high-tech capabilities, which means that the best example, you know, the goal in many museums is to, is to receive traveling exhibitions. Well, you also need to fill out a facilities report, and one of the key items is, tell us about your climate control. Well, ours is, we close the windows. That's not sophisticated enough in order to receive some of the astounding collections that do travel this country. In addition to that growing need for new and innovative cultural institutions in our community right now, one of the other institutions, of course, is the Orange County Museum of Art, but within the Newport Beach City limits, I think that's about it, the two of us as those cultural institutions. We want to contribute to the revitalization of Balboa Village, better preserve the nautical heritage of the community, and once again, the loss of our parking lot lease with the Irvine Company. Now, the next question is, so we bought the Fun Zone. What in the Fun Zone did we buy? So I finally get to use one of these laser pointers. This is the ferry landing, where the ferry arrives. This is Palm Street here, boarded by East Bay Avenue, Washington Street, and the promenade. This is one city block equivalent, in this case, to approximately thirty-four thousand square feet. The build, the building footprint that you see here, which of the existing buildings, is approximately seventeen thousand. Based on current zoning, that's what the allowable footprint in this particular location. The diamond in this situation is that we also acquired the marina out front. That's two hundred feet of bulkhead, also approximately a thousand lineal feet of dock space. Under the present circumstances, the way this is configured now, for the foreseeable future, which would be over the next couple of years, what changes is that the bumper cars will find a new home beginning September thirtieth. Their lease is up on September, excuse me, September thirtieth. So they'll be vacating, as will the Drummer Boy Ride, which is here, the Dark Scary Ride, which is located here, will also be finding a new home beginning September thirtieth. We've been working with Joe Tunstall and the Balboa, the Fun Zone Ride Company. Now, the next area that we will move into, this miniature golf area and this management office, this is a preview center, preview exhibition, exhibition location, which we will, it's already in design, and we anticipate being ready for the public sometime towards the end of the summer, early part of September. What people may not know is underneath the Fun Zone are fifty-six parking spaces. It's a unique location. You find the parking by going in underneath the Dark Scary Ride here, which is somewhat indicative of entering that garage. But I'll save that for another story much later. This is the proposed site plan concept, prepared by Bauer &amp; Wiley, again, working in collaboration with the trustees. You can see this is, this footprint here is very similar to what what we have under the existing Fun Zone configuration. The forward section is for exhibition, transpack, and model gallery, lobby entry location, interactive exhibits towards the back, and intermingled throughout. This learning center here, which can accommodate, it's about twenty-five hundred square feet within the building, and then this activities courtyard, which, as you can see, has the carousel removed, can accommodate another forty-four hundred square feet. So by the time this entire area is used for public access and public activities, we're close to seven thousand square feet. This area here is exhibition, sport fishing, and museum store administration towards the rear back here. The focus on this is that it's a community asset. And it, it's a community asset not only in terms of the programs that are offered by the museum, but the fact that it would be available for rental for community groups, businesses that want to have a unique venue for their events. So this is the concept drawing as to what this would look like. Ferris wheel, as you can see, continues being a focal point in this area. This, the, the forward portion of the museum is glass. It faces north, so it's, the direct impact of sunlight is minimal. It's meant to be a festive atmosphere, drawing people in, whether they're coming actually inside the museum or just want to participate in whatever activities are taking place in the courtyard. One of the things in talking to Ralph Rodheim, who's heading up the Balboa, excuse me, the the annual Christmas Boat Parade, you know, Mike Whitehead does his play-by-play right here. So this entire area becomes part of Christmas at the village, where you can really enjoy yourselves, and the entire community has, has a destination to participate in all the Christmas activities. This is the view from East Bay Avenue. This would be Palm Avenue here. This is the ferry landing, once again, the, the Ferris wheel here. The, the nature of the architecture is based on the idea of classic, what we call classic maritime working architecture, but only presented with a, with a view towards the future. So it's a salute to the past, a nod to the future, recognizing, you know, we are preserving Newport's nautical heritage, but we're also bringing that to the next generation. So the building needs to reflect some of that story. This is the activities courtyard. Once again, this is where the, the former location of the carousel. This is a compass rose, touch tank area here, once again, community meeting place, and a great deal of activity for anyone from age three all the way up to ninety-three. This being the education learning center, this is an entirely flexible space. Right now, in this rendering, it's set up as a, a crafts location for model building. What we, in addition to that, those kinds of activities, it's a good lecture hall, classroom space. It's intended that from this point on, from this beam and below, this entire wall is retractable, so that now that learning space becomes part of the activities courtyard. So it really, it, it adds an additional dynamic environment to, to the area. This, of course, is the educate, the exhibition, sport fishing, and mezzanine location. The idea here is to get the idea of the scale, what you might experience in an old sail loft when they were constructing and manufacturing sails. This is what we call the transpack gallery, that would probably include activities from the Newport Ensenada Race and a host of others. The transpack race is really the signature race for the West Coast. Goes out of Los Angeles to Honolulu. We've had a, a strong response from the Transpack Yacht Club about moving forward on this kind of gallery. One of the key players in that is Roy Disney and Leslie Demuse, who produce a great deal of the, the movies that are attached to that. So we're, we've got a good collaborative effort going on to, to build this gallery and add hands-on activities that will engage the community and those who visit. So specifically, museum programs, what we call edutainment in action. The term is borrowed from Peter Keller, who's the president of the Bowers Museum. We like to describe it as learning as a participatory sport. And in this case, it's a virtual sailing simulator, navigation simulator, sport fishing simulator that we already have, shipwreck exploration, which would involve working with companies like Odyssey Marine Exploration out of Florida that specialize in ship, shipwreck exploration, and potentially having a live video feed from one of their exploring of the wrecks. In addition to that, developing a whale-watching program in collaboration with local Balboa, Balboa Village partners. So our goal, from the beginning, from the, from the date that we signed the agreement to purchase the Fun Zone, is we've gotten involved in the, in the village right away. We're on the Balboa Village Business Improvement District Board. So we try and, whatever we do, we try and make sure that the village stays involved and that we become an active member of that village. Feel as though that the, the fastest way for revitalization and building that community is for us to be involved as quickly as we can. In addition, we'll have an octagonal theater that will show extreme sailing videos, model gallery, but presented in a high-tech, high-tech and dynamic environment. We've been in conversation and discussions with the UCI Institute for Software Research coming up with ideas on how to make what is otherwise a static location come to life. So some of the ideas are fascinating, not quite ready for presentation, but nonetheless, our goal is to create a dynamic environment. Lastly, we'll have some fully rigged sailboats within the building so that you can get the idea of having a sailboat put into context without the, the oftentimes results of seasickness. In addition, we'll, we're looking to attract traveling exhibitions from around the world, but once again, we do need to control our, our internal environment for that. From a community enrichment standpoint, expanding the museum's reach to a wider, more diverse audience, provide a first-class education and cultural facility, provide a funning, fun and meaningful family experience. And, and this is the critical part. On a regular basis, we get asked, are you taking the fun away from the Fun Zone? Because if you're going to do that, let's rethink this whole idea. Our goal is to make sure not only that the fun stays in the Fun Zone, but it becomes that much more active, focused on a nautical perspective. So that's everything from, you know, once again, all the various kinds of simulators to figuring out how kids can climb a mast and still be safe when they get to the top and get to the, to the crow's nest. So the emphasis is, is on maintaining the fun, and it comes down to something as simple as this. We have trustees with young children who take their kids to the, to the Fun Zone, and those kids ask the same question that everybody else does. Dad, what are you going to do to keep this fun for us? So we are entirely focused on making sure that that continues. Additionally, we're, we, the building that was referenced in the earlier renderings was to use sustainable architecture through friendly, environmentally friendly building, which means it will essentially be a green building. Bauer &amp; Wiley Architects are particularly adept at that, so we'll work with him on creating a structure that meets with those demands. We want to build on the idea of having tall ships visit the harbor. Now, I realize that, you know, we do have that extra challenge of having a deep enough harbor to accommodate many of these tall ships. We found out last spring when we asked the, the links to go over to the Fun Zone for Mother's Day weekend, there wasn't enough water. At unfortunately about four o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, that, all the members of the crew were thrown from their bunks because they settled into the silt. We were surprised to find out that there was only seven feet of water in there. So in the configuration of the renderings, and we'll get to it as the last slide, you'll see this, a parallel dock that comes out for tall ships, and that's for visiting, visiting tall ships for a tall ships program. We want to support revitalization that the effort that the city started several years, several years ago, honor the cherished memories of the Fun Zone, and maintain the fun in the Fun Zone as it, as it is today. So I want to leave you with this slide and, and this thought that it is a world of possibilities, and we are working, building collaborative relationships with everything, with people as diverse as former Disney Imagineers, as close as the UCI Institute for Software Research, and numerous others in between. So we intend to create a landmark destination in a place that is a landmark of this community. So with that, I want to thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Is there any questions for Mr. Muller?
I, I have comments.
Mr. Ridgway.
Obviously, I met with David and the board members at Nautica Museum, and it's, I, I just want to make a, my comments that we started revitalization here some years ago. This is an integral part of fulfilling what I see as a dream. I love looking at this. David, you know I love the, the walkway, the going out to the tall ship, the pedestrian element that we try to recreate in the village that's not been there for years and years and years. I know Leo Gugajian over at the Pavilion Building will create a pedestrian element. This is a world-class, destination-oriented museum that I can't say enough good about.
Thank you.
And I, I think there still will be arcades there. There are other parcels there that are still being used, so.
Absolutely.
Not everything is lost, but I think.
The arcades, additional arcades, Bay Arcade is over here.
Right.
So yes, I.
I, I just think there's going to be a natural progression here. I don't know what that natural progression is. I still hold out hope for the, the theater, but I want to applaud you guys for doing what you're doing, and the board of directors of your organization of having the foresight, the vision, and to put up money for what has been an otherwise difficult project, and yet it's just a gorgeous project. I, I can't say enough good about this.
Thank you very much.
I can't wait for it to open.
We're looking forward to it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public that would like to, like to comment on this? Seeing none?
Can I? Thank you.
Ms. Councilmember Curry.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd just like to compliment David, whom I've known for many years, for a real visionary plan here. I want to echo Councilman Ridgway's comments because I really think this is going to be a great cultural treasure for our city that's really going to help both revitalize the area but also help focus our attention on the water and our heritage as a city. And I don't. And I also want to commend you for the sensitivity that I think that you and the museum board are showing, and how you're dealing with the transition of the Fun Zone. That's a very sensitive issue for a lot of citizens in our community with a lot of very warm memories, and I commend you for the way you're addressing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm still waiting for the second ship to sidetie along there so we can recreate the 1960, full 1960 picture that you showed.
You only have a couple of years to go.
Okay.
We'll recreate that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, man.
And good luck. I think that this will be a wonderful asset to the city. That's item number 14. Item number 15, the city manager has recommended continuing this item. It's the cooperative agreement with the County of Orange and Orange County Development Agency regarding issues within or adjacent to the city sphere.
I'll move the action. What date do you want to leave it open?
I'd like to leave it open at this time.
Okay. I would suggest, do we have to have a date certain, Robin, or can we take it off calendar? No? Then I'll make, then I'll certainly make the motion to take it off calendar tonight.
No, we can put it on calendar, the next agenda. It may be that we want to have a special meeting, so it's going to be close to the next meeting.
Okay, but for now, we'll take it off calendar.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Please vote.
Public comments.
Coats, can we stop?
Public comments.
Stop.
Come on, Doris.
Anybody wish to comment on this? Please vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk.
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're.
No, 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 no. Hold on.
I'd like to have us adjourned tonight in memory of Kevin Russell. Kevin was 46 years old. He passed away a week ago Sunday at 46, on his sofa, just resting. He had apparently either an aneurysm or a heart attack, we don't know. There was standing, basically standing room only at St. Andrews last Thursday, and I just want us to adjourn in memory of Kevin.
Thank you. 820 is a record for me, at least.
Given the last few months.
Yay!